Motion coming out of closed session?
There is. I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing, excuse me, the closed meeting were heard, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
I second. Okay, moved by Mr. Alcarro, seconded by Dr. Acuff. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson is absent. Ms. Lee, or Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
All right. We will have a roll call here to start off our meeting, starting with Rossalden.
Rossalden, School Board Attorney.
Jono Alcarro at large.
Rebecca Berlin Whitehall.
Kaye Acuff, Jack Jewett Representative.
Judy Lee, Rivanna District.
Graham Page, Millau District.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Opal Kendall, School Board Rep, Student Board, Student Representative.
Matthew Hawes, Superintendent.
Daphne Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent for School Community Engagement.
Christine Diggs, Chief Technology Officer.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
And Phil Gerbetta Communications, Strategic Communications Officer.
Thank you. Next will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next, we'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, we'll have approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve tonight's agenda.
I second.
Moved by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Mr. Page. We can do a voice vote on this. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the consent agenda. Does anybody have a motion to approve consent?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Dr. Berlin. Does anybody want to pull any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Motion carries. All right. Next, we have our announcements. Does anybody have an announcement?
So, I just want to talk a little bit about the week. Had, you know, a really good week this week and tomorrow. So it was a four-day week for students. Tomorrow, first thing in the morning, all of our educators will be having division-wide professional learning community meetings and then professional development in the afternoon. Tomorrow, I know, assuming board members know, but just a reminder that first thing in the morning, there's a child nutrition meeting and also Building Services Department meetings. And child nutrition is at Lakeside first thing in the morning. And Building Services will be all meeting over at Almalt High School if you want to stop in. First thing to say, say hello to everyone. I had some great, two school visits this week that were really great, over at K-Tech and also at Lakeside. The diversity resource teachers had a cookout at Darden Town Monday night, and I saw Judy and also Ellen at that event. My wife, Sherry, and I attended really competitive volleyball game and also field hockey games at Monticello High School Tuesday night. And, and something big happened that night. We witness history. A student named Ava Barnes is the Monticello High School goalie, and she recorded 500 saves. And according to the Virginia High School League, she's the first student in Virginia High School League history to record 500 saves in, in field hockey. And that was a really, they, they kind of, you know how they kind of know it's coming? So they had a big celebration, everything shut down. It was, it was a lot of fun. And it just reminded me, you know, students are out there playing their hearts out. It's not about college. It's not about anything except they're there with their, their teammates and their friends. And they just really want to have a great experience. Tuesday night, there was an, Wednesday night, we had a great session on chronic absenteeism. It was their community information sess- session that was hosted by our Office of Community Engagement. And Daphne and her team did an excellent job with that. And we had great technology support as well. And so I think those were the things I wanted to mention. And then there were a couple of things tomorrow in the check-in. Judy sent out to the board a really wonderful report that we haven't seen in a while. It's called the Stepping Stones Report, a report on community well-being of children and families in the Charlottesville-Almalt area. And I have that linked in the check-in. And that's, report really gives you a sense of the li- everyday lives of our children from a data standpoint. And it also, in my, this is my opinion, as an educator, you see the impact that you are having with children because you can see where, where they're coming from, what their backgrounds are, what their needs are. But you also see the results of the, of the work that you're doing in terms of graduation rates in particular, I think. And we had, recently had two Almalt High School students that were named as National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. Nathaniel Brierton and Sophia Sun. And I've asked for them to come to the next board meeting so the board can give them a certificate and shake hands with them. So, a lot of, a lot of good stuff going on out in the schools with our, our staff really making it happen. So, thank you.
Just to say that on last Thursday, Daphne Kaiser was there as well. There was a community outreach breakfast at Center One that I attended together with Tessa Ashhoff, the Executive Director of the Albemarle Foundation. And it was a very good meeting. It had good attendance. And we talked a lot about mental health and the impact it's had on our students.
I, I did want to say one notable thing. I enjoyed the, that cookout and I appreciated the invitation. I didn't know we had a pickleball, like a professional pickleballer on our staff. Megan Washburn is a professional. She taught us how to play pickleball. It was really fun.
Oh, Megan Washburn.
Yeah, so I, I-
I didn't know that either. Did you?
Had a good time there. No other announcements? So next, we'll have public comment and I will turn it over to Ms. Osborne.
We did have one more announcement. I'm sorry, Ms. Lee. Dr. Kaiser has an announcement.
Good evening, Chair Lee and School Board Members. The Virginia Department of Education has provided recommendations and best practices for high-impact tutoring in the All-In Tutoring High-Intensity Academic Tutoring Division Playbook. After analyzing the 2023 statewide data, the Virginia Department of Education highlighted the persistent learning loss that Virginia students continue to experience due to the impacts of COVID-19. Third through eighth grade mathematics students are 13 to 19 points behind their 2018-2019 peers. And third through eighth grade reading students are three to nine points behind their 2018-2019 peers. While there have been some improvements in the 2021-22 academic year, students are not accelerating at a pace to be on track with their pre-pandemic peers. The data indicates that one in two students are at risk of not meeting grade-level expectations in grade three through eight reading, and two in three students are at risk in mathematics. Students need more support, more time to recover the learning they have lost. In response to the 2023 Standards of Learning test results, the Virginia Department of Education has implemented an evidence-based approach called All-In Tutoring, which is a high-intensity tutoring program aimed at helping students accelerate and move them past pre-pandemic SOL test results. The fully state-funded program will provide students with an additional 67 and a half hours of additional instructional time and will focus the VDOE's new 2023 Mathematics Standards of Learning and Virginia Literacy Act. According to research, high-intensity academic tutoring increases achievement by an additional three to 15 months of learning. In addition, tutoring also resulted in greater student engagement and higher grades across all classes. There are seven all-in guiding principles, which include high dosage. Students receive additional support in a targeted way beyond what a student receives in the classroom, which consists of three to five hours per week. It may be math, all reading, or a combination of both. For 18 weeks of tutoring for at-risk and at-risk students who are, who have scored low proficient, third through eighth graders, and 36 weeks of tutoring for those third through eighth graders that did not pass the 2023 reading and/or math SOL assessment. Students in grade three are required to be placed in tutoring based on their scores on the Fall Administration of the Virginia Growth Assessment in reading and mathematics. The second principle, low tutor-to-student ratio. Tutoring is most effective when students are organized in small groups. The all-in approach recommends a 1 to 10 tutor-to-student ratio. The VDOE recognizes that it takes time to build a strong tutor pool. In addition, a recommendation has been made that tutors utilize digital, digital software to reduce the group size and spend a one-to-five small group time and rotate the two groups of students within an hour. Thus, one tutor would serve 10 students in an hour for tutoring. It also calls for an accelerated approach, teaching on grade-level material while attending to prior grade-level gaps within grade-level small group instruction. Tutors connect gaps in learning to the grade-level new learning. An example would be a tutor assigned to five students in grade four for digital practice or tutoring five students in small group practice of both fourth-grade content as well as underlying concepts that the student may struggle to master. Post-pandemic studies indicate that students who received the accelerated approach struggled less and learned more than students who were pulled in remediation intervention setting. And the intervention focusing on reteaching prior grade material before moving on to grade-level material. Another principle involves grade-level materials. The VGOE will provide grade-level practice in reading and mathematics to school divisions and families at no cost. The materials, which uses a digital platform, one for reading and one for math, that's aligned to the standards, will be the basis of personalized tutoring that will support students to stay on an accelerated pathway and will be paired with strong grade-level instruction grounded in high-quality curriculum for grade-level classroom instruction. Trained and supported tutors, when given strong materials and supports that guide personalized tutoring sessions, tutors can have varied backgrounds and experiences, including current teachers, retired teachers, student teachers, paraprofessionals, volunteers, consisting of college and university students as well as community partners that may have limited teaching or training. Relationships are very important. Research suggests that tutors meeting regularly with the same group of students facilitate strong positive relationships and result in stronger understanding of students' learning needs. In addition to positive relationships, these relationships have shown positive impacts on students' confidence in the classroom. Progress monitoring is also a guiding principle. Tutoring programs that embed progress monitoring and digital materials allow for personalized tutoring without extensive planning. Progress monitoring should be incorporated into tutoring sessions so that the tutor can track progress closely using progress data. And it also ensures that students accelerate at their own pace. So, school divisions have been charged to use the VDOE's tutoring playbook, including tutoring requirements, best practices, and potential models for implementation, to develop their specific tutoring plan for implementation by the middle of October. Currently, ACPS Division Leadership is in the process of determining scheduling and staffing. And the Department of Instruction will present a detailed draft plan to the board for review and feedback at the next School Board meeting. Plan considerations include schedule, staffing, students identified for tutor, tutoring, family communication, logistics, and materials. We must choose to be all-in. Our families, our educators, our communities, and our business and community partners must work collaboratively to accelerate learning for all children. Thank you.
Are you doing questions?
Dr. Kaiser, I know you said the materials would be provided by the state. Is there any other financing associated with that? And are we planning to pay tutors or oversight or some?
There is funding from the state for the all-in, high-intensity tutoring.
Okay, thank you.
Just on the note about the state providing resources both to the schools as well as families, do we know anything about the timing and if they're going to meet the deadline that they gave themselves to get that stuff to us and families?
When, that's a good question. So when I was at the Region Five Superintendent Meeting last week, Dr. Coons was there. She said that that was a deadline mid-October that she was pushing, or actually, beginning, from October 1st, I think, is when they're pushing to have the online resources that teachers and other tutors are supposed to be able to use. They fast-tracked their RFP process to do it. She was optimistic about it but didn't commit to it. So I know that they're, they're trying to meet that. And it's a significant amount of money that, that's been allocated across the state to cover expenses. And we plan on compensating all employees, including teachers that are, are doing the tutoring during the day. I know that's something a lot of school divisions won't do, but we look at it as a planning stipend and we will ensure that we do that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious as we start to get the resources from the state, particularly for the parent resources, if they are going, I'm hoping that the state knew enough to put an RFP with language other than English for parent resources. But I think, you know, as we think about our, our families, that'll be something that's important.
Yes.
Thanks very much, Dr. Kaiser and Dr. Hawes. Any other announcements before I send it over to Ellen? Thank you very much.
All right, want to public comment. We invite and actively seek the public's input in matters relevant to School Board governance and provide time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupts this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. Individuals and/or organizations wishing to speak during public comment must sign in with the clerk. Sign-up is available beginning at 9:00 a.m. on the Monday of the meeting week until 2:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Speakers should adhere to the following protocol. State your name and address or your voting district. Address comments to the School Board as a whole. Limit comments to those matters that are relevant to School Board governance or school division operations. Give written statements and other supporting material to the clerk. If you are unable to complete the presentation in the time allotted, a copy of supporting materials will be provided to School Board members. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. A commenter will be required to discontinue the comment after three minutes. A color-coded light or card system is used to time presentations. The yellow light means the speaker is two minutes into the presentation, and the red light means the speaker is at the three-minute limit in the presentation and must wrap up. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the School Board requests no clapping, booing, or any other audible form of support or non-support be used. If members of the public wish to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. When multiple comments on the same topic have been presented, the chair may request additional comments on the topic be limited to those who have new information to present. Debate and dialogue with the School Board are not allowed. Use of the projection system is reserved for staff-scheduled agenda item presentations only. Tonight, we have two speakers. The first one is on Zoom, Ms. Sabrina Fagans. You may go ahead. You may go ahead.
Ms. Fagans? Yes, one second. Let me, let me mute the live. Can everyone hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. As Sabrina Fagans, Community Leader and Advocate for Equality. Address 2421 Abington Drive. Top of the concern, not from a mother, aunt, or community leader, but more of a decent human being. And this is brought to my attention when the School Board, as well as the superintendents, are putting policy above students' safety. It's time for a change. In this case, exactly what has happened with the leadership and the School Board staff is being demonstrated as of today. Now, Jayla Fagans has attended Alamo County School since kindergarten, which is 11 years of development, relationship building, trust, security, et cetera. Her mother was fortunate enough to be able to purchase her first home in February of 2022. Now, Jayla Fagans was forced to be put into the city schools even after express, expressed extreme concerns regarding being put there, from bullying threats down to typical threats from teenagers. We decided to put in a request to have it transferred back to the county school and was denied several times with reasons such as she does not live in the county. Although she's been in the county for the last 11 years, she's paid, her family has paid taxes, et cetera. She doesn't live in the county is what we continuously kept saying. Even after the plea of saying that she doesn't feel safe, even evidence after being harassed several times, on May, on September the 15th, now Jayla was assaulted and attacked in the bathroom at Charlesville High School. Now, Jayla has missed 15 out of the 28 days due to the fear of being attacked and bullied. This last incident, as I stated, on September the 15th, where she was attacked by three girls in the bathroom despite all efforts made by letting the city school and officials know that this attack was coming because the girls told herself. There was nothing done about it. While you're sitting there probably saying that this is a Charlesville City School problem, however, it is not just a Charlesville City School problem. She was attacked by three girls. And it is a School Board problem. Per Section Code 221, 253, 137C, the School Boards are required to have policies designed for public education to be conducted in an environment free of threats and disturbance for all. Not just for those of color, not for just those with money, but for all. And despite this is not happening in this case today. Today, a total so far in our investigation have demonstrated 24 students who do not, who attend county schools but do not have no parent employment exceptions as well as reside in the area. However, there are not, there are very few-
Thank you. Your time is up.
-who fix this. Okay. Thank you.
Our next is in-person, Melissa Brown.
Members of the Superintendent's Office, Student Representative, Members of the Board, good evening. My name is Melissa Brown. I've been teaching in Albemarle County for the past 28 years. I am a resident of the Whitehall District. I'm coming to you tonight because I'm tired. I'm tired of coming here again and again to beg to be treated as a professional. I'm tired of being accused of taking a ball and going home when members of this board keep moving the goalpost. We were told you needed documentation that the majority of the employees in this county wanted collective bargaining. Vernon Lecty brought you those cards. You refused to take them. You moved the goalpost. We've heard that 90% of what we wanted has been negotiated. It's that 10% that you've dug your heels into the ground and refuse to even consider changing. What constitutes an emergency? We don't know. What constitutes any of this? That's just a fancy way of saying other duties as assigned. In other words, no change in our contracts whatsoever. If I'm sounding angry, it's not anger. It's frustration. If I'm sounding angry, it's not anger, it's frustration. It's frustration. I'm tired of coming here and asking to be considered, to be treated as professionals, to have a contract that is different for elementary school teachers, middle school teachers, high school teachers. We don't all have the same duties. We might have the same title, but we don't have the same duties. Therefore, we deserve to have more detailed contracts. I certainly would not be proud to be part of a group that is considered to have the worst collective bargaining resolution on the table in the entire state. That's nothing to be proud of. We're willing to come back to the table. You have to be willing to at least hear us and be willing to come to some sort of compromise, some sort of agreement. The question is whether or not you're willing to do that. I would hope that you are. Because right now, actions speak louder than words. And the actions of this board tell us you don't care. That's what your actions are saying to us, is that you don't care. And I'm tired of that. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Thank you to our commenters. Next, we have school board and superintendent business. Do we have any school board members who have any business to discuss? No superintendents business, okay. Next, we have our school division business, 9.1 School Naming Review Update. Karen Waters.
Good evening, everyone. We just like do our little dance every time, right, Kristin? Hello, good to see everyone. I'm Karen Waters. I am the Director of Community Education, and I'm here in my role, serving as the superintendent's designee to serve as a project manager for the school name review process. So thank you for giving me an opportunity to update you on our progress. As you know, whoops, I'm gonna leave that mouse alone. As you know, back in 2018, the school board directed the superintendent to add our values as part of the criteria for naming school facilities and buildings and to review the names of all of those schools named after individuals and report recommendations to the board for changing the names of schools that are not consistent with their values. We have our strategic plan, which includes our values of equity, excellence, family and community, and wellness. And we want to ensure that our values and our strategic plan are also seen within the names of our schools. We also want to make sure that we maintain fidelity to our anti-racism policy, of course, because we reject all forms of racism as destructive to our vision, mission, values, and goals. And as you know, we have three different forms of racism, individual, institutional, and systemic, which we all want to ensure are not represented in any portion of the way we do our business here at ACPS. So of the schools that have been reviewed thus far, we have looked at 14, 12 of the 14 schools that are named after individuals. And out of those 12, seven have been retained and five have been renamed. Recent changes were made to the school name review policy, which require a staff designee, which would be myself, to do some research and bring it back to you all for you to make a decision as to whether or not a school's name should be reviewed. In the event that you elect to do a review, that means that the individual's name would be removed, and it's essentially a school renaming. Tonight, I am here to give you an additional recommendation on the part of the superintendent on one of the two remaining schools for review, Leslie H. Walton and Agner Hurt Elementary are the ones that still remain. I have looked into, as I told you in the last meeting, I wanted to take a deeper dive into both of those gentlemen so that I could see if I could find any specific comments that could be directly attributable to them to give us a little bit of insight as to where they are on things. And previous research had shown that Mr. Walton had a very close relationship with Mr. Kael. And we wanted to make sure that any decisions made with respect to Walton Middle School were reflective of his personal views and his personal record as opposed to, you know, guilt by association or anything like that. I looked at several sources, including a deep dive into the daily progress and interviews, and you see some of them there. A little bit of background about Leslie Hughes Walton Middle School. That school was opened in 1974, and it was named after Leslie Hughes Walton, who became the chair of the school board following Paul Kael's tenure. Mr. Walton was born in Fort Union, and his father was a reverend, Mr. Leslie Harvey Walton. Many people assume that Leslie H. Walton School was named after Leslie Harvey, but it was his son who had passed away quite close to the time the school was named. Interestingly enough, he was the assistant superintendent and the clerk of the school board and worked very closely with Mr. Kael. The Daily Progress wrote on his death that those who knew him and observed him working together were continually struck by their single-mindedness of purpose. But after doing additional research, I found that equity, excellence, family and community, and wellness are demonstrated in the public record with respect to Mr. Walton. This is an article back from 1962. Mr. Walton was asked about women driving buses, and that was quite a novelty back in the day. Mr. Walton not only expressed his pride in having female bus drivers, he mentioned that they were actually safer drivers than the men. He also showed a lot of concern about the welfare of our employees who were not teachers. He was a little bit of a hero to them and frequently was advocating for folks who were not often recognized. Mr. Walton did his thesis at Duke on buildings, and he was very, very involved in the construction and maintenance of our schools. This quote from the Daily Progress says that he enjoyed working with architects and engineers, and he was a conservative in money matters, which might have been part of the fascination for buildings. Sometimes you can lose the purpose of, sight of a purpose of a school, but Mr. Walton never did. As a result of his expertise on the physical plants, Mr. Walton was likely chosen to give a talk to the McIntyre PTA back in, oh gosh, I think this was just as the brand-new middle schools, Woodbrook and Brownsville, were opening. And he took some questions afterward, this was in '66. He had just come back from a conference with the Department of Health, Education, and Welfare in Richmond, and he was just really candid in his remarks. He said he was speaking for himself and not as a representative of the school board when he was asked about integration. And he said that in his estimation, Albemarle would have to abandon their free choice, which supported segregation by allowing parents to opt their children out of a certain school and rely on a geographical model, which he thought was a little bit more equitable. And it made sense for buildings like Rose Hill, Yancey, and Murray that were previously black schools to still be utilized. He went on and shared his general teaching philosophy, which was fairly progressive at the time. And I think he pretty much gave a full-throated comment that really spoke to our vision and values. And I quote, "No matter what the child's race, or social, or economic background, if we can make him feel he mounts to something, he'll do twice as much in the way of successful work as if he doesn't amount to much." And also said that what we must do is listen to our children. We must put the students and their thoughts centered and first and foremost, which is pretty much the philosophy that we have now. Mr. Walton suffered a heart attack, and he passed away a little over a year after serving, being appointed to the school board. And the Leslie H. Walton Educational Fund was established in his name. During his tenure as assistant superintendent, he was instrumental in establishing K-Tech. And an annual Leslie H. Walton Memorial Scholarship in the amount of $2,000 continues to be awarded to a student showing promise and need in his honor. I have a couple of clips here, an inscription from his thesis that was gifted to the Walton Library in honor of Uncle Leslie, educator and Christian friend to all who passed his way. So I would like, on behalf of Dr. Haas, to recommend that we retain the name of Leslie H. Walton Middle School. And I will be doing additional research on Agner Hurt, and I expect to report back to you all before the end of the year, certainly after the holidays. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or?
I want to know if you read his thesis.
I did, I did. It was amazing, because you know, it's all typed back then in the little charts. I can just imagine someone poring over one of those old typewriters.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you so much for your time tonight.
So will we, will we have a motion or will it be on consent?
We will put that on the consent agenda for next time.
Okay, great, thanks very much. Next, we have the High School Center Two update, Lindsey Snoddy.
Good evening, I'm Lindsey Snoddy, Director of Building Services. I'm joined this evening by Charles Tilly, Principal with Quinn Evans Architects. In July, we came to the board to review the initial programming efforts for High School Center Two. Our presentation this evening will highlight the programming efforts since our last update and discuss the results of these programming efforts. And we will also conclude the presentation with a budget update, and I will now invite Charles Tilly to begin our presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. Just a quick reminder, the scope of High School Center Two is a new building. It's 400, going to serve 400 students a day. It's approximately 60,000 square feet, and that will be all flexible learning environment spaces that can be, you know, changed and modified through the years. And we're going to start the building around three learning communities, the math, engineering, and science, hospitality and tourism, and entrepreneurship, business, and innovation. We've been working for the last few months on a variety of stakeholder engagement events around the structure of the career learning communities and the vision for High School Center Two. We've met with middle school students, the design committee, high school students, community and business leaders, and high school faculty and administrators. We've also completed an online family survey and met with the Hydraulic Community Advisory Committee, talking with neighbors about the project and specifically the site plan. And then we have evaluated, as a part of this work, the future workforce needs noted in the current Perkins Five Report, which is the regional labor and economic data for the Charlottesville area that's sort of the up-and-coming, you know, 10-year plan or 10-year needs. And some of the key takeaways from these community partner meetings, the family survey, the teacher discussions, and the student discussions is they really like and want students to have real-world opportunities with these career learning communities broadly across all the programs. The community partners are also looking for more ways to be connected to these programs and to build partnerships across all the different career learning communities. A lot of these conversations and feedback have been beneficial to both of us and the design team, but also to your leadership and their planning, the curriculum as we're developing the career learning communities as well as High School Center Two. This feedback has helped shape the career pathways and programs, especially around the idea of providing a diverse, a diversity of pathways and programs so that all students can find their path and have a real-world experience. And through those real-world experiences, helping students with the critical thinking, communication skills, and other skills they're going to need to thrive in work and in life. This is the current career learning communities enrollment. You can see the Information and Communication Technologies Center there, that's Center One. And math, engineering, science, and entrepreneurship, business, and innovation are two of the larger ones. That's the current enrollment for this year. And as we, as the design team have taken all of this feedback, collated it, curated it, and worked with the design committee to develop what we call the core values or goals for the new center. They're really around community collaboration, authentic experience, and equitable access. On the community, we want to establish strong relationships between students, faculty, families, industry partners, and the environment. From collaboration, it means teaching students to work in diverse teams, to grow, to be leaders. Through an authentic experience, which is preparing students to be part of the workforce with professionalism and innovative ideas, and then building equity through accessibility of resources and spaces. And so High School Center Two is embodying these four principles as we're moving through the design process and the outcomes that will come from this project. Some of the feedback has formed a little more clarity and refinement about the physical spaces that should be included in the building. And one of those was, we had a couple of specialty labs that were programmed but not really spelled out. And so we're thinking that that's going to be a culinary arts lab. Providing dedicated space for the community and industry partners is, that is visible and gives them a place to connect with students is a small space we're adding to the program. And then we're looking for professional learning area, the professional learning communities, which are the teacher collaboration spaces. We want to make those slightly a little bit larger to facilitate better collaboration. In the end, the building program is highly flexible and will offer opportunities to provide changing program needs over time as the education and conditions change. This is the site plan that we shared last time that we are in the process of rezoning the area that's in front of High School Center Two. Or, sorry, Albemarle High School, right along Hydraulic. It's the area that's the, you can see this blue line here, essentially the front area of High School, of the Albemarle High School parking lots. This is our overview program, I mean, project timeline. We're wrapping up our reprogramming effort and this, going through the site rezoning process. We look forward to meeting with you a couple more times through this design process in the fall here and in the spring to show you our design progress. And then wrapping up the design and construction documents by this time next year, hopefully, we'll be looking to go out onto the street for bids and start construction in the fall with a projected opening of '26, '27 school year. So it's exciting to move along on this project.
We're going to have an update on the budget. Our current budget for this project is $36.3 million. As we've delayed the project from its initial start in 2018, we do have some additional costs. And with the selected site of the Lambsland Campus, where you've seen the building, there are some additional costs too. So we're looking at first adding the data center, which we believe is a critical component. And by combining it with this project, we also can, we think we can have some cost savings around $700,000. This money was previously requested as a 1.7 standalone facility, but it was unfunded by the Board of Supervisors, so we're hoping to incorporate it here. There's also additional. There's also additional project scope and site costs. We have some replacement parking that we're going to be looking at, fully outfitting the culinary lab, and then adding some nominal space for community partners. And then you'll see the inflation number there from FY '19 because the cost of goods and services have increased pretty dramatically since this budget was developed. So one of the funding options we were presenting tonight is to request the $5.3 million from the sale of K-Tech to the City of Charlottesville and have that appropriated to the High School Center Two project budget. There's no action on this tonight. If the Board is supportive, we would bring it as an appropriation request at the next meeting. Open it up for questions.
I'd like to just make a comment. When I was going through this presentation, thank you for it, on page seven, the one with it's what we've learned offering diverse pathways. That really struck me. Because if you look at the community partners, in the top five, we're looking at human development, education and human development, leadership, social justice, and entrepreneurship. And if you look at the families, I mean, it's much more academics-focused, you know, in large part. And then looking at the middle school focus group, you know, the areas of interest are so diverse. And that's part of why I like this whole program of the different pathways. Because I think there really is going to be an audience for each of these. And it may take some time, you know, for a lot of them to develop. But I enjoyed the presentation, but I had to just comment that this is the one that just really hit me. And so I thank you very much for this.
Do you think you guys could work with Ms. Waters on coming up with a better name than Center Two?
Yes, we heard that. We have two schools to name, so we'll be working on that process.
Yeah, Center One and Center Two. They need a little more descriptive names.
Maybe three schools.
Ms. McWicks will help you on that.
Well, that is a question. I guess in terms of our policy, it's for reviewing the names. I'm not sure proactively what our naming policy is. I guess this is more for you, Lindsay. Are we, at the same time we're looking at designing and Center Two, are we looking at the academy space within Albemarle High School? And are we going to coordinate whatever updates we need to do to the school? I know that was the original part of our capital request was, at the same time we're doing a center model, we were going to upgrade all of our high schools. And that piece of the puzzle has largely fallen out in terms of BOS funding. But it seems to me suddenly we have a little bit more space, perhaps.
So we haven't looked at those rooms specifically, but with the modernization funding that we do have, we did projects at Western and Albemarle this past summer. Albemarle was the bathroom renovations, which took a big chunk of it. But we can certain, the next big project to Albemarle that we're planning is the second floor connector. Yeah, which was, that really rose to the top in the master planning process. We'd have to look at where we could, if we needed changes to those classrooms. They are highly flexible as well, so I don't think it'd be a major overhaul, but we could certainly look at that, the funding that we do have.
And then the issue I have, and I think I spoke to you about it the other day, is whether, given the inflation and given the additional costs and given our capital process, whether we should utilize the K-Tech funding for the capital rather than doing an ask to the Board of Supervisors? Because we do have ideas about CTE going forward as well. So that's more of a question.
Okay, I have a question on the focus areas that was on probably near the first or second slide. And I know it's math, engineering, hospitality. And what was the third one?
The entrepreneurship, business, and innovation.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I'm excited about seeing what the plans for the new building will look like.
Yeah.
And I guess I liked your comments at the other night at the CAC as well about trying to cite it so it doesn't block view of the Blue Ridge. But I don't know if you've been to the new Boys and Girls Club, but I think they've done a very good, interesting job with their materials and lighting and windows.
We actually did visit, after one of our design meetings, we went and visited the culinary area that they have at Boys and Girls Club because it is quite, quite beautiful.
It is.
I just had one, when we had the community partners breakfast a couple weeks ago, I just had a question about the sixth through 12th grade, I think, top priorities. Yeah, so sixth and 12th grade students. So that, one of the top four is transportation, distribution, and logistics. And I'm just curious like what that looks like in a class? What sort of classes comprise that? Do you have any sense of that?
I'd have to lean on our instructional partners, who aren't with us tonight, but we can bring that back to the Board.
Okay, I'm just curious about that.
There really is everything, we can do some reports on that, but it's really everything ranging from ground transportation to drones in terms of making plans around how to deliver, how to transport goods and services, things like that. So, but I will, when we do our follow-up meeting tomorrow, I'll make sure that the Board gets an email that goes into more detail about that.
Okay.
About all of them, it would be nice, yeah.
Yeah, all of them. It would be nice, just, just so I can match this to class ideas.
There is, there is a piece of paper that has that on it.
Oh, okay.
Just a really easy, you know, summary of those.
These are the career clusters that Virginia, these are the Virginia career clusters. So I'll just send the Board a link to that at the video.
Fantastic, yeah.
So I'll do that now.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Thank you, Lindsay.
Looks like Ms. Waters is available now, if you want to talk about naming.
And we, it is, the policy is building and naming facilities. So we do have a policy for how they name them.
Okay, because we have two elementary schools and, yeah, a center and the old center.
It's just been so long since we've had a new building.
Ms. Osborne wants to lead the process, it seems. She's been leaning on me for like three years to do something.
Wants something descriptive.
Right.
What we do in those centers.
And if we offer Ms. Waters a new car, she'd probably really be honored for Travis said.
Next up, we have our summer, summer school report for 2023.
I want to thank Dr. Kaiser for presenting this report. Several of our teammates are out. And I think she's probably, if not the best, or one of the best instructional leaders I've ever met, especially as a principal. So it's great for her to be able to put on her instructional hat and talk a little bit about summer school. And she really dove into this. So thank you very much for doing this tonight, Daphne. It's much appreciated.
Thank you for the opportunity. Good evening, Chair Lee and school board members. I will present the Summer Learning 2023 Status Update. I guess I need to get the presentation up.
Christine's coming.
Okay.
Oh, it's a tab.
Sorry about that. Got you right here. Okay, yeah. Thank you. All right. The Summer Learning 2023 was designed as a four-week, 15-day opportunity for kindergarten through eighth-grade students who were identified as not being on grade level as indicated by their 2022-2023 reading and/or math assessments. This opportunity allowed students to engage in enrichment and extension activities such as Camp Invention, which covered the content areas of reading, math, and STEAM, science, technology, arts, and mathematics, to jumpstart their learning for the 2023-24 school year. In addition, high school students were engaged in a combination of instructor-led and ingenuity credit recovery courses primarily linked to SOL assessments and graduation requirements. Offerings included key courses in English, history, math, and science, as well as economics and personal finance. Physical education was offered virtually and in person and included opportunities for recovery and first-time enrollment. Specific supports for English language learners was provided during summer learning through a collaboration model in which the English language instructor collaborated with the content teacher. They planned together. And then the English language learner instructor would go into the classroom to support the student within their whole class. And then also have opportunities to pull students out to work in small groups on specific areas. So various data points were triangulated to best identify students needing to attend the summer learning program. Kindergarten through third-grade PALS and grades fourth through eighth-grade SOL scores. Other data points were considered, including being a reader benchmark data, common assessments, grades, students receiving interventions, special education, and English language services, as well as family feedback. Initial letters and emails were sent to families. And those who did not respond were sent follow-up communication, letters, email, emails and phone calls in an effort for us to hear from every family. To measure the progress, elementary teachers were asked to assess reading utilizing the SIPs program. For math, ST Math was used to measure progress as well as the Early Mathematics Assessment System, or EMAS, for kindergarten students from the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program. Middle schools use the MCOMP, or Mathematics Computation, Mathematics Assessment, and reading word lists to evaluate students' progress. During the pandemic years, due to staffing challenges, we often had to rely on less experienced teachers to fill summer school positions. Coming out of the pandemic, staffing summer school has become less challenging. We also increased the hourly rate for summer school teachers to $40 an hour, which attracted more experienced veteran teachers. Classified staff, such as teaching assistants, cafeteria workers, nurses, bus drivers, received an extra $5 an hour on top of their hourly rate. The $500 bonus provided to teachers for serving the entire four-week summer schedule resulted in more teachers serving for the entire school period. This provided more consistency for students and supported developing connections and relationship building between the teacher and the students. Regarding elementary enrollment, we had a total of 917 elementary students who were served during summer learning. This was 50 more students than summer 2022. 107 more students were served at our highest need Title I schools. For middle school, we had a total of 216 students, which was consistent with enrollment from summer 2022. With regards to documenting attendance, there were some schools keeping internal spreadsheets versus entering attendance in Power School. Processes were put in place during the summer to ensure moving forward that all schools will input attendance data in Power School. Project Camp Invention was first introduced in 2022, specifically for enrichment and social and emotional learning. The program was partnered with community agencies such as ACAC, Parks and Rec, Wild Rock, et cetera, to enhance the hands-on and social experiences of students, which was really important to focus on coming out of the pandemic. Students had to learn how to rejoin an in-person community. Families during this time had an option of students attending a week at a time. Students had instruction during the morning hours and participated in enrichment activities with community partners in the afternoon. In comparison, 2023 summer learning focused on a targeted invitation with scaffolded learning, leading to cumulative gains. Enrichment was still a part of the activities, but the school day was much shorter. Materials selected had more academic rigor with progress monitoring. This slide provides a comparison of the 2022 and 2023 summer school teacher staffing. In 2022, there were 165 teachers hired, 49 of which taught all four weeks of summer school. 43 of the total teachers were non-ACPS teachers. These individuals could have been teachers from other school districts, retired teachers, substitute teachers, and student teachers who recently completed their program. In 2022, there were 142 teachers who recently completed, there were 142 teachers hired, 23 less than 2022, 80 of which taught all four weeks of summer school. 15 of the total number of teachers were non-ACPS teachers. We hired less overall teachers in 2023. However, more ACPS teachers taught the entire summer session in 2023 than in 2022. The data seems to indicate that the incentives helped to increase the numbers of ACPS teachers serving for the entire summer school session. Preliminary data analysis indicate, indicated a small gain in read, a small gain in reading and larger gains in math. This data was captured by the teacher only. A review of classrooms indicated larger gains in math than reading. Test sensitivity may be a reason the data showed a larger increase in math. For summer 2024, we will take advantage of the improvements in data tools and collection this school year in order to have a more comprehensive data collection next year. The Department of Instruction will continue to determine the most appropriate data sources in order to better identify students who may need to attend Summer Learning 2024. Increased intervention staffing tied to the Virginia Literacy Act will deepen our approach to closing the achievement gap and identifying students who are in most need of services. Recruitment incentives were positive and showed that we were able to attract the most experienced teachers for the entire summer session, who already had social connections to the invited families. Improvements in data collection for attendance and progress monitoring will help us to more accurately report successes of our students as well as identify areas of growth. So consistent attendance leads to greater gains. We may need to reexamine the role of community partners in providing enrichment and recreational experiences to ensure we meet the needs of all students and look at the students, the whole child. We want to tap into students' intrinsic motivation by creating a truly customized invitational learning environment. We have to begin planning soon after winter break. And in addition, we will pair these actions with best practices, recommendations from Bellwether, and all-in high-intensity tutoring for Summer Learning 2024. Any questions?
Thank you very much. That's a, that is going to be a huge jump if we have to.
That's a, that is going to be a huge jump if we have to serve, and I know we're talking a little bit more about kind of how we're going to address All-in Virginia at the next board meeting, but going from, you know, 1,100-ish to 3,000 is going to, you know, require lots of transportation and lots of teachers. When do you norm, when do we typically start sharing kind of the dates and the times with families and community members?
It's usually during the early springtime.
Early spring.
Around, the ideal time is around March-ish.
Yeah.
April. And in previous years, it's been a little later.
Yeah.
But we're going to have to send out information earlier.
Yeah.
To families.
Yeah, I think the early, you know, as I just think about myself as a mom, like, you know, families start to, you know, stress in that February, March, at the latest timeframe about like, how am I going to keep my kids, you know, safe and enriched during the summer? So I think the earlier we can kind of, particularly just the dates and the times, I think it doesn't necessarily at that point have to be kind of a lot about what it is, but the more noticed parents have, I think the better, so.
You mentioned that classified staff had a $5 increase in their hourly rate. What is their hourly rate in general?
I'd have to come back to you with the specific amounts. I'd have to come back to you with that information. It's been a little while since I was in HR, and I know that the hourly rates have increased over the last year. So I'd be happy to get that information and share it with you.
Thank you.
Dr. Kaiser, what percentage of the students who were invited to participate in the summer programs actually did, and was there variation in that across our schools? I'm really focused on the elementary school kids, but I was pleased to see that Title I school participation increased over last year. But, yeah, I'm just trying to see how many we thought should be there.
We can get individual school data for you, we have that on a sheet. And so, let's see, we, the percentage of students that accepted and came was 62%. The national average is 60%. So our goal for this last year was to beat the national average, and then we're going to go, we're going to set a higher bar in terms of percentage for next year. Some of the other things we're thinking about, we're kind of having an internal debate right now, which is healthy, about how to do summer school and All-in Virginia. Because there's some recommendations in the All-in Virginia document that talk about doing it in the summer, but like doing these two-week programs where you're doing tutoring all day. And I guess you could tell by my tone of voice that I don't know about, I don't really think that's a good way to do summer school. My feeling is that the continuity that summer school provides and the whole child approach of having breakfast, having lunch, working with community partners for afternoon programming, what we would want to do is thread the tutoring through the summer and extend the summer school program by two weeks. And so what we're also going to work on is, we started breaking down the previous model like about this time last year, after the report that we gave the board. And then we started meeting once a week, really grinding away at it. Craig Domer, Chris Gilman, instructional staff, they really flipped the model and went, used specific criteria to invite students. Prior to that, it was principals identified on their own, they'd use their own criteria, and then it was also anybody that wanted to come, so, and it wasn't rigorous. It just wasn't. So we're having to also work with communicating early, right, really right after winter break, as Dr. Kaiser said, not just, okay, here's how long it is, here's what, you know, here's your child needs to go, but also what the program's going to be. We are going to abandon Camp Invention to go for a more rigorous math programming. And so our goal is to really engage students in intense academic acceleration so that they, so that they start off in a better place in the coming year than they were the year before.
I'd also be interested in why those parents who didn't enroll their kids, what, I mean, do they have to spend the summer with their dad or something? I mean, you know, what are the, what are the reasons that they don't participate, and can we overcome those if we need to?
So some of the feedback we had that we're trying to address is the length of it. So like, if it's only four weeks long, then as a parent, if like, let's say you've got a couple, two children and three children, and a couple of them are going to summer programming, and one of them isn't, you're like, well, okay, I got four weeks covered, but I don't have enough, so that's why we want to try to extend it. The other piece that we just had heard kind of less directly, but pretty consistently, was they had heard that it wasn't rigorous, that it wasn't really helpful for kids. It was a different philosophy of come in and have fun, and then you'll like school better, and then you'll want to go to school. Well, we're, we get all that, and I think there's a big piece of that, but that's the relationship part with the teachers, and they do a great job with that. I think it should be more about improving academic performance, and parents, that's what they want when their child goes to school. And I think by offering more pay and that incentive that we offered, we were able to put teachers that were seasoned in Alamo County schools in there. And then while, you know, we didn't have huge jumps, but we did, we were able to show, and Craig could speak to it more, that students did grow in their math, they did grow in their reading skills. We think another couple of weeks and a more intense programming, we can do more because we have a proof of concept that, you know, four weeks, we were able to accomplish something. So I think that's the other piece we tried to flip. So we think we can, we'll get you the sheet that shows the different schools. I know Greer had a big jump this summer.
I was a bit worried about Greer with the new Boys and Girls Club right there, that the temptation might be great to.
Well, the good thing about the Boys and Girl, one of the many good things about the Boys and Girls Club being right there is that if the child goes to summer school, they just come, walk out and walk over to do programming in Boys and Girls Club, so their parents, their family really didn't need to be concerned about what they were going to do in the afternoon because they could do that. We did offer vouchers for free Parks and Rec to any students that participated. We didn't have a lot of takers on it. We had takers, but we didn't have a whole lot. But that was a strategy we were trying to use to bridge the afternoon because we were having difficulty recruiting bus drivers. If you do it in the summer, you know, they're like everybody else that are 10-month employees. They usually have plans and things like that in the summer, other jobs. So saying you're going to do it in the morning and then in the afternoon in the summer, I think was a big ask. So we did tailor that around, being able to provide transportation, so that was a trade-off that we made to do it. As Dr. Kaiser said, if we weren't more intense, more intentional with our work with partners, we might be able to bridge some of that to have a longer day program.
Like Kate, I too was interested in the reasons, and I guess there wouldn't be any way that we could find out what some of the reasons were as to why they didn't accept the invitation.
Sure, we could send out a survey about summer school and tee it up for this upcoming session.
How long was the?
Ask for reasons.
How long was the school day, summer school day?
It's about four hours.
Yeah, half day. But we made sure there was lunch.
And this coming summer will also be four hours or will be a full day?
Well, it'll, I would say it's going to depend, and it really, and I know this isn't a great answer because it is kind of a compromise, but what it will depend on is the availability of bus drivers. And be, so if we can get bus drivers that will do morning, some do evening, or some, you know, committing to the whole day as a rule, then we could have a longer day because kids, they need the transportation to get to the schools. It'll more, given our history, it'll more than likely not be a full day. But I think that with a more intensive math program and abandoning Camp Invention, then we will get a lot more out of that, and also running that thread of the high-intensity tutoring through the summer. I think we'll be able to get more out of the four hours. And if we stretch it out another two weeks, we'll also have the students have that greater consistency of school programming, relationships, services, things that they rely on. So it'll be a trade-off.
Thank you, Daphne.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kaiser.
Do we do an update, like a formal update to the school board on summer school?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have other business. Is there any other business from board members or the superintendent? I actually have some other business, sorry, I know everyone's packing up. I sent a message to folks about Representative Coulson's K-Tech opening, so we have one meeting left this year, and then we have three meetings next year, and we need someone to fulfill that role. It's on Tuesdays, often there is a snack. Anyone interested?
I don't think there's snacks anymore. Don't mislead anybody.
In the past, there have been snacks. In my experience, they were delicious. Is the dinner coming up? Okay. I cannot speak to the future of our snacks, but, so we, there are two of the meetings are actually joint board meetings, so everyone would come anyway, but you'd have to come for the first hour of it. So it's important because on October 17th, I think we might have a problem reaching quorum without someone taking that role on.
I can do it for October 17th, so in that role, I can't be there in November.
Okay. Thank you, Jono. I think the next one, so I think October 17th is the only one this year, and then January, March, July, maybe? Okay, so can I? Thank you, Jono. And then the other thing is, Matt, I know we've talked about having Rosalyn work with a board member to work on work sessions. Do we have someone for that yet, or are we still looking for that?
We had you.
I remember that.
And then you became the chair, so we need to, we need to get that going again.
So if anyone is interested in working with Rosalyn and other staff members to work through the year and look at what work sessions we should have, ideas, usually the ideas come from the entire board, but then there's one person who is liaison. We don't have to necessarily decide that tonight, but that's just something that is on my mind that we need to have. I keep looking at you, Rebecca.
I'm happy to do it for the rest of the year, and then we'll have to see after January.
Okay.
Well, we don't, do we have any more work session? We have one more work session this year.
And we already have that one scheduled. All of it will be next year, but the work for it is this year.
Plan for next year.
Yeah, you can plan ahead, that's the goal, is try to get out in front of it.
Okay, thank you very much, Rebecca, and thank you very much, Jono, for the K-Tech.
That, it's the 17th, is that, October 17th is the K-Tech?
Joint, yes. And that one definitely does have dinner, so no lies about that. That's the rest.
Hopefully you're welcome to come to the K-Tech joint board meeting if you want to.
If you would like, yeah.
Dinner at six.
Is there any other business by board members or the superintendent? Hearing none.
Commend our chair for getting us out for the first time in history before eight o'clock.
Thank you very much, I have a nine-minute speech about that, thank you.
Of course, we were here at five.
Oh, yeah.